Live on Bright House, Channel 4, 96 and 10. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good evening. The regular school board meeting for September 8th, 2015 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. Henderson.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Present.
Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
Mrs. Neese and members of the Board, on today's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, two recognition items, 14 consent items, and five information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There is a revision to Item A5 on administrative staff recommendations.
Do I have a motion to adopt the September 8th, 2015 special school board meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to the administrative staff recommendations.
Great. Mrs. Neese and members of the Board, under Item A5, you have three administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second. Continues to be ladies' night tonight. Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Again, motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to take this opportunity, if I may, to recognize and welcome two of our newly appointed administrative staff personnel. And I think Mrs. Irwin will be helping me do the honors. First, congratulations go to Tina Susan on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal, 10-month at O'Gally High, to the position of Assistant Principal, 12-month at Titusville High.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Blackburn for this opportunity. I'm very excited to become a Titusville Terrier. My new principal back there, Mr. Prycer, and Mr. Diesel are here to welcome me. And I'd like to thank my former principal, Jeremy Solomon, for preparing me for this position. I'll try not to cry. And Chris Hinkle, who spent a lot of time with me this summer teaching me the master schedule. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we want to congratulate Jeremy LeBrun on his reclassification from the position of Assistant Principal, 10-month at Merritt Island High School, to the position of Assistant Principal, 12-month at Merritt Island High School.
Someone pointed out somebody else to me. Sorry about that. Come on. Stand up. You still get the job.
That's good. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve Merritt Island in this new leadership role. A couple people that have helped me on this journey, my beautiful wife Lauren, she's always supported me in my career, my former principal, Todd Sheer at the Great Southwest, gave me a lot of leadership opportunities when I was a teacher to prepare myself for this role, Krista Miller, the previous 12-month AP at Merritt Island, she really provided some great professional development and showed me what an educational leader and instructional leader can be. And my current principal, Ms. Molly Vega, who I look forward to learning even more about in the position and working my way towards a principalship in the future. So I appreciate all the support that I've had thus far in my career. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Blackburn, please tell us about the recognition items on this evening's agenda.
Mrs. Neese and members of the Board, tonight we have two recognition items. The first one is to recognize the 2015 Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. Facilitating this presentation is Dr. Deborah Pace, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. Dr. Pace.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Blackburn and community. I am excited tonight to get to bring to you information about some of our outstanding leaders here in Brevard Public Schools. The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award were established in 1988 to recognize exemplary principals and assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. The programs honor principals and assistant principals that have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. Joining us for the recognition tonight will be Dr. Richard Dunkel, President, and Mr. Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators, BASSA, along with Deborah Blair from the Community Credit Union, who will present each winner with a check from our wonderful and generous school district business partner. First tonight, recognizing Brevard Public Schools' Outstanding Principal Achievement Award winner. Ms. Tara Taylor, Principal at Pinewood Elementary School, is this year's Principal of the Year. Tara started her teaching career with BPS at Atlantis Elementary in 2002, she became an Assistant Principal at Port Malabar Elementary in 2006, and she was appointed Principal at Pinewood Elementary in 2011. Since becoming principal, Ms. Taylor has led the school to high levels of achievement with the philosophy of reach every child, every day. As a leader, Tara strives to teach each teacher every day as she recognizes the impact of her work with children, with teachers and the children that they serve. Her nomination for this award described her work this way. Within her principal position at Pinewood, Ms. Taylor has developed and promoted a school climate that is congenial, professional, and focused on professional learning communities. Under her leadership, her school continues to be one of the highest performing schools in the district. Ms. Taylor's leadership is highly respected, and her teachers, staff, parents, and community recognize her persistence, her patience, and her determination in her role as their school leader. In addition to representing BPS at the state level competition for Florida's Principal of the Year, Tara will also represent the school district for a second consecutive year in the Florida Commissioners Leadership Academy, serving this year as a trainer and facilitator for principals joining the group. Congratulations, Tara Taylor. If you'll come forward, please. And Mrs. Neese and Dr. Blackburn, if you'd come down, we'd like to get a photo. Also tonight, we're going to be recognizing Ms. Jennifer Brockwell, now the principal at Oak Park Elementary School, as this year's Assistant Principal of the Year for her work at Challenger 7. Jennifer started her career with BPS as a teacher at Challenger 7 Elementary. She was promoted to Assistant Principal in 2011, and as I said, she was recently promoted to be the principal at Oak Park Elementary. She has continued to grow in instructional leadership, holding herself and others to standards of excellence. Her nomination for this award stated, Jennifer Brockwell is an exemplary Assistant Principal with a strong influence on student achievement. Through her leadership in data analysis, face-to-face feedback, and follow-up based on frequent informal observations and collegial sharing of best practices, she led Challenger 7 in a year's time to going from being at the bottom of the VAM list to one of the top performing schools in the district. We are confident Jennifer will continue to do great things with the teachers, staff members, and students at Oak Park Elementary School. Congratulations, Jennifer Brockwell. Please come forward. And to complete our presentation tonight, Mr. Gary Shifrin, formerly the principal at Merritt Island High School and now Executive Director of BASSA, would like to say a few words. Mr. Shifrin?
Thank you, Ms. Pace. Dr. Blackburn and school board members, the Brevard Association of School Administrators and affiliates is proud to be involved in this honor for the newly named Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. We in BASSA acknowledge that the heart and soul of educating our students happens in the classrooms with our outstanding teachers. Without them doing the job they do, our students would certainly not be as successful as they are in the Brevard County schools. As administrators, one of the most important tasks we have is to provide our teachers with the tools necessary to provide the quality education needed in our classrooms. Having said all this, we also know that a school is not very successful without great leaders. Brevard Public Schools is fortunate to have many exceptional administrators who are committed and dedicated to ensuring that our mission is fulfilled. School administrators must be visible, student and teacher-centered, and willing to tackle issues for which there are no easy answers. There are so many tasks our administrators perform on a daily basis, and it would be impossible to mention all of them. But some of them include instructional practices, parent involvement, transportation concerns, student and teacher health and wellness, curriculum, behavioral issues, community and business partnerships, professional learning communities, evaluation issues, building morale and relationships, technology, school schedules, and many more. Our honorees tonight have experienced all of the challenges I mentioned and more. They were selected because of what they have accomplished and the respect that they have received from their colleagues. BASSA is honored to have partnered with the Community Credit Union in honoring Jennifer Brockwell, Brevard County Assistant Principal of the Year, and Tara Taylor, Brevard County Principal of the Year. Congratulations to both of you, and remember, you are representative of the exceptional school leaders who work both at the school site as well as here at ESF. Thank you very much.
Item G7 is to recognize Brevard Public Schools' award-winning physical education programs and teachers. Mrs. Cindy Van Meter, the Associate Superintendent of the Division of Curriculum and Instruction, will make the introductions.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Blackburn, and guests. Brevard Public Schools presents awards annually to schools and teachers that offer physical education programs of superior quality. The purpose of the awards is to identify, recognize, and promote exemplary physical education programs at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Mrs. Rachel Winston, our K-12 Health and Physical Education Resource Teacher, will now present our recognition and awards. Ms. Winston?
Thank you, Ms. Van Meter. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn and Board members. The Excellence in Physical Education Award is presented annually to schools that offer physical education programs of superior quality. The purpose of the award is to identify, recognize, and promote exemplary Brevard Public Schools' physical education programs at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. In preparation, these schools engaged in a rigorous process of answering more than 35 inquiries about their programs, which were then compiled into a portfolio for a very sharp pencil review by a committee of teachers who have received this award in the past. The portfolio review was followed by a site visit from physical education experts from across the state, including the Physical Education Specialist from the Florida Department of Education. The schools honored here tonight have successfully completed each of these rigorous review steps. This is our ninth year of the Excellence in Physical Education Award, and it is important to note that it is a three-year award, which will be in effect from 2015 until 2018. As you can see, their Excellence in Physical Education Award banners are proudly displayed for the first time on the walls here tonight. The banner will be showcased at their school to let the community know of their great achievement. As recipients of the Ninth Annual Excellence in Physical Education Award, the teachers have received a monetary stipend from the district and will be receiving a polo shirt designating the school's achievement from funds donated to the Brevard Schools Foundation specifically for physical education teacher recognition. We are also proud to announce that O'Gally High School will receive additional recognition at the state convention in October. The Society for Health and Physical Educators, also known as SHAPE Florida, annually recognizes physical education teachers and programs of notable excellence. Teachers earning recognitions are those who change lives forever. Many of us wouldn't be who we are today if it were not for teachers like these who challenged, encouraged, and inspired us. On behalf of SHAPE Florida, I would like to recognize Mr. Timothy Powers from O'Gally High School, who has been selected as the 2015 SHAPE Florida High School Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and O'Gally High School, who has been selected to receive the Program Recognition Award. We are extremely proud of these exemplary teachers and model programs. Dr. Blackburn and Mrs. Neese, please join me in recognizing our Brevard Public Schools' Excellence in Physical Education Award winners for 2015 through 2018. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your recognition from Dr. Blackburn and Mrs. Neese. Principal of Gulfview Elementary, Ms. Terri Moller, and Physical Education Teacher, Mike Fitzpatrick. Principal of Suntree Elementary, Ms. Michelle Giambetti, Physical Education Teacher, Kay McDonald. Former Principal of Westside Elementary School, Ms. Elaine Passanisi, current Principal of Westside Elementary School, Ms. Darlene Rogers, and Physical Education Teacher, Elizabeth McKinney. Principal of O'Gally High School, Mr. Jeremy Solomon, and Physical Education Teachers, Tim Powers, Robert Collins, Brendan Nguyen, and Sandra Raven Lin, and recognized Barbara Berry, who is coaching volleyball and could not join us here tonight, but we congratulate her as well, and Mr. Solomon will bring her award back for her. Thank you.
We are now at the public comment portion of the agenda. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not permitted. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. We have eight speakers tonight. I'll call you up in groups of three. The first three speakers are Rebecca Rayburn, Joseph Kroto, and Shagultha Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn and members of the Board. My name is Rebecca Rayburn, and I'm a professional educator. Jane Goodall said, "Change happens by listening and then starting a dialogue with the people who are doing something you don't believe is right." And there's no one in this room ignorant of what must change for teachers. For almost a decade, this district has required sacrifice from its teachers, and now it's time to make good on the broken promises of the past. From asking teachers to go for one year without a raise, which turned into multiple years, to asking secondary teachers to give up their second planning period for one year, well, we all know how that turned out. This district's bargaining team has historically saved millions of dollars on the backs of teachers and reneged on promises made to them with non-binding verbal agreements and handshakes. First, the district bargaining team must exponentially offer better compensation and benefits for the teachers. The salary increases being offered by the district are not adequate because teachers have gone without COLA increases and step raises for years. Teachers have been deprived of salary increases, which has resulted in lost income and retirement benefits, and this district needs to make up for it. Hiding behind the letter of the law regarding salary increases is inexcusable. If Orange County can step up with a 6.5% raise and better insurance coverage, then Brevard County must as well. Additionally, the district must address its self-funded insurance plan, which is inadequate. Frankly, I don't understand why BPS wants to be its own insurance company, for the job of a school district is to oversee the management of the schools. That is an enormous job in itself. I ask again, why doesn't this district provide traditional health insurance? Cigna is a management company doing the district's bidding. The district claims they are worried about keeping the fund healthy, but research shows that if income is uncertain, then self-funding is the worst possible choice. We are a publicly funded institution, and when the money does not come in from the state, the district bleeds employees. Last year's increased premiums and co-pays plus punitive out-of-pocket deductibles are prime examples. If the district is genuinely concerned about the health of its workforce, they would move mountains to ensure it. This plan does not prove they do. They must lower the cost of co-pays and decrease the punitive out-of-pocket medical deductible. One simple outpatient procedure should not bankrupt an employee. However, and of much greater importance, is that no human being should be forced to refuse diagnostic procedures recommended by a healthcare provider because it is cost-prohibitive. What if that person then develops a more catastrophic condition? What will then happen to your healthy, self-insured fund? Instead of investing in things, it's long overdue that you begin to do the right thing and invest in the people who are the heartbeat of this district, its teachers. Peter F. Drucker said, "Management is doing things right..."
Rebecca, I'm sorry, your time is up.
...leadership's doing the right thing. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Kroto. I'm speaking as a member of the leadership team for Premier Innovations CTE Charter School. I'm asking the Board to postpone their consideration of our application at their next meeting because of apparent unfairness and inconsistencies in its evaluation. An example of this is in our area of curriculum. We submitted an application last year, and our curriculum is based on a needs analysis of the community workforce demands and higher ed observations. We proposed three programs to open our school, and we were criticized for being too ambitious in doing that. In revising our plan, we cut it back to one program, and this year we got criticized for offering one program, that that wasn't enough of choice for our students and our parents. We think this creates a moving target that is unfair to us and our community, and we believe we need to meet with you and review what our philosophy is and why we made decisions in our application, and how these were misconstrued by staff in their recent evaluation. Other areas of concern in regard to this has been in communication with the Office of School Choice. We believe we are getting mixed messages from them as to what is appropriate to include or not to include, and we believe this has created a catch-22 situation where we answer one question in one way, and that creates a problem that they use to penalize it. We answer that question in an alternative way, and we get penalized for that as well. So I'm asking the Board to consider postponing our final review, so we have an opportunity to meet with you and discuss these matters directly. Thank you.
My name is Shagultha Wilson. I also represent the leadership team for Premier Innovations CTE. I am also asking that the September 22 meeting be delayed. We also like an opportunity to speak with the Board directly to address some of these inconsistencies that have appeared throughout our evaluation document that is public knowledge. We feel that some of the things that we were criticized copying and pasting on our application, you guys did the same thing. Your team, your team that made this determination did the same thing. They copied and pasted identical stuff that was on your 2014 evaluation document is on your 2015 document. So therefore, based on these inconsistencies, and you guys weren't in the room when this evaluation was taking place, we were grilled for two and a half hours by your panel, a panel consisting of 14 people. Every question that we were asked, we addressed at this meeting, and yet there are inconsistencies that appear in the documentation, again, publicly available. Thank you.
Okay, the next three speakers, Dan Bennett, Hamilton Boone, Terri Jones. I called three names, and a lot of people got up. Is it Dan and Company?
Dan and Company.
Dan and Associates, okay.
Right. Good evening, members of the Board. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, Pam and Harold as well. I'm not here to negotiate a contract that we will take care of in the next round of negotiations. I am here to talk to you about a process that needs to happen before we return to the bargaining table, perhaps as early as next week. I will be meeting with my executive board and my bargaining team, oh, look, many of them are right here, and we will be talking about the direction of bargaining. I suggest the Board take time to meet in executive session as well. The last bargaining session was nothing more than an attempt to return to old ways. This year was supposed to be the year of new hope for teachers. We rather easily agreed to a new beginning salary for teachers, but from there, when we talked about additional money, the accusations of unethical and illegal were hurled across the table. We all know that we can make our proposals work within the letter of the law. Your accusations were unnecessary as well as inaccurate. What we don't know is where teachers will be placed on the salary schedule, something the law calls for. We've been asking for years for you to return the years of experience to the contract. But more importantly, we don't know when the district will be ready to make a commitment to teachers that you all spoke about as far back as last summer. The halfpenny has passed. More dollars are coming in than expected. The operating fund to capital fund transfer can stop. It should have stopped last year. We believe your word as a Board should mean something. We settled last year, and were told we'd come back to talk dollars after the halfpenny passed, then we were denied. We were told to wait because this was the year we were going to make a big splash. You've made a ripple, but not a splash. So far, all we have is an explanation of why $33 million to the district is not really $33 million. $33 million. We got an offer of roughly half the $23 million new dollars that the district will admit to, where last year we got almost two-thirds of the new dollars. But most egregious is we got a lecture on why we have to believe everything we're told from the finance department. The same finance department that always has a few unfunded but unfilled positions to cut whenever they need dollars. The same finance dollars that regularly reports to you about how a few dollars are being held back, that always has a plan for heroically refinancing something or other, or shifting a few dollars from here and there when a priority comes up. The same finance department that could find $6 million for software but not a quarter million dollars to keep schools open. You can always do it when it's a priority, but teacher salary hasn't been a priority. You can make it a priority this year. We urge you to talk in executive session to figure out how to find the money now, not just in the printed budget, but in a budget that is referred to all year long, the one where a few dollars can always be found. I've been sitting through these board meetings back there for almost a decade now, and I always see where money can be moved to find a need. The public is onto it too. Teachers are owed, you can do the right thing. And while you're discussing salary, you can find us the entire 100 minutes of planning time that you committed to last summer. You said you'd find 160 minutes roughly as taken care of by early release Wednesdays. Our offer for the other 40 minutes was rejected, we were told, "Come back in January." We see how that worked. You can do the right thing, we hope you will. Thank you.
Okay, Hamilton Boone. Hamilton Boone.
Thank you all. It's not good to be here, but I'm glad to be here. I'm following up from an email that I sent to each board member. Only one person bothered to answer that email. It has to do with pedophilia, incest, rape, and bestiality, as well as graphic sex. Now, this isn't an adult toy store. This is in the books that are in Brevard County schools today. In particular, we had addressed one book about three years ago called "The Bluest Eyes" by Toni Morrison, and I hope that book is not in the school system here any longer as others told it was. The book that I wanted to bring to your attention again is beloved by the same author. I will not read from the five excerpts that I found in the first 32 pages of this 322-page novel that 15- and 16-year-old boys and girls are given a choice to read. The reason I know about it is my son's an AP class English Lit and Comp, and he brought the list home. Two of the books have graphic sex acts and body parts in it. This one in particular has bestiality, rape, pedophilia, and that's in the first 32 pages of over a 300-page novel. I'm asking that you guys stand up and get this garbage out of our schools. You know, do something about it. Tomorrow, I will go to a book reconsideration committee meeting where, guess what? The principal picked every person for the committee. Gosh, I wonder how they're going to vote? He's for the book. He told me, "You know, it's a college course." And I said, "Well, you know what? This is a high school, and there's over 200 other books that can be chosen for my son to choose from and for other kids to choose from." Kids should not be exposed to this. They have a hard enough time in school with all the hormones flowing, trying to do the next right move, than instead of sitting down and reading this kind of garbage. Ms. Morrison is a laureate, Nobel laureate. Well, we know some of the people that have accepted those awards, but I'm asking the school board to let's change this system. You all are responsible for what comes into our schools, and the system is broken. Thank you.
Teri Jones.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn and school board members. I serve as the Director of Enrollment and Student Services for Premier Innovation Career and Technical Education Center. This evening, I am speaking on behalf of Premier's Innovation CTE Center, a future charter school within Brevard County for ninth through 12th grade students with an industry certification component. As you have heard, Premier Innovation sat through a charter school interview, second attempt, late August, and recently received a recommendation from the school of choice to deny our charter application. This evening, my purpose is to address a few of several inaccuracies within the evaluation instrument and to make two requests. There are areas identified by the school of choice that states we met standards last year, however, within these same areas, we were denied this year. This year, recommended denial referenced pages within our application that are not even in the application, meaning these are blank pages. We feel that the school of choice is predisposed to reply with a disapproval. Additionally, our responses at the interview were not incorporated in the final responses by the school of choice. This is our request. First, we're asking for a scheduled decision date of September 22 on behalf of our charter application. We're asking for it to be pushed back at least by one month. And secondly, we're requesting that Premier Innovation is afforded an opportunity to meet face-to-face with the school board and the school of choice director to review our application and allegations of inaccuracies. We have the support of Eastern Florida State College and financial commitment from industry partners who are waiting, waiting at the door. It's just a matter of us receiving an approval. We implore you, school board members, not to make a final vote without thoroughly reviewing our application. This has been a five-year and costly process that we know will be successful with your support. Thank you.
Jeffrey Gilchrist, followed by Carol Gilchrist.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. I've been in Brevard for over 20 years, and I'm an entrepreneur, a small business owner that focuses on technology. I recognize the tremendous potential we have in Brevard, and I'm a past teacher from New York State. I understand there's a significant percentage of students currently in our schools right now that are not college-bound. A few years ago, I owned a different technology company, and that company had contracts in technology. The problem was that I was unable to fulfill or compete with other companies outside this area because of the lack of technology-certified students, actually people, personnel. So after searching for four to five months, I was unable to find anybody that was certified in IT technology in the area that I was focused in, which was certified ethical hackers. And as a result of that, the consequence was I had to shutter the business. In case you don't know what a certified ethical hacker is, there's bad hackers, which are called black hat hackers, and there's good guys, which wear a white hat. They're called white hat, certified ethical hackers, just in case you needed to know. If we'd had a technical school in Brevard with a constant stream of graduates, I believe we would have been successful. We need a track that non-college-bound students can follow specifically like a vocational technical school. Based on my understanding of the current pool of people looking for work in Brevard, both young and senior or old, Brevard can support one or more technical vocational schools. And specifically, I've heard of one here called Premier Innovations, and there seems to be, she just said, five years to get approved? I'm kind of surprised at that. Please help small businesses like myself in Brevard and quickly accelerate the approval process for vocational technical schools here. People need jobs, small business needs help. You guys can just be one positive influence on that process. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker, Carol Gilchrist.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Carol Gilchrist, and I have been working with Goodwill Job Center for about a year. Before that, I was working with a contract with the Brevard County School System through a tutoring company that was part of your SES program. But the reason why I'm speaking to you tonight is because I did become aware of the Premier Innovations Career and Educational Technology Center that's being proposed to you. So even though I didn't bring a bunch of people with me, I can honestly say that I've worked with indirectly over 10,000 people in the past 10 years. The children that we tutored, we had over 1,000 a year through the school system, as well as about 1,000 people a year that come through Goodwill looking for jobs. Unfortunately, these are not college-bound people that we're talking about, and so their ability to make a decent living for themselves is really narrow. So, you know, I'm really speaking for them. You know, I need to be somebody who can just say, "I want to be a voice for the community." I'm a resident here, I've lived here over 25 years, and I love this county. And, you know, I don't know what your all background is, but being with the school board, you touch people every day. You touch the parents, you touch the families. And we want to create an environment where now there's a school that the kids can go to as they're looking, you know, they have to be career-focused, or they're just going to drown, probably, so to speak. So I just really want to encourage you to revisit the application, or whatever it is, at whatever point you're at, and hopefully have a favorable outcome for this school. Thank you.
The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Board member comments? Mrs. Arsher, we had a lot of comments about Premier tonight. I saw you writing things down. I'm not asking you, not forcing you to come up here, do you want to comment at all about, since a lot of attacks were made on the Office of School Choice, would you like to come down and share a little bit? Well, because, I know, but I'm afraid these people might have stepped out by then, and I guess I feel, I want to raise it up to tonight. I was going to pull it at the information time, but I'm thinking with everybody here, I want to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit now.
I do believe that, Mrs. Neese, I know that Premier is not happy with the outcome of the team, but the team spent a great deal of time going through their applications. I do see some improvement from last year's app to this year's app, but still some big pieces are missing. They addressed that it was like a double-edged sword. The answers to last year's questions are different this year.
Why don't we do this, Stephanie? We'll get to the specifics in the information item. For people that are watching public discussion, can you just talk about what the process was? Because we did have some, all I want you to do for this part is explain, what do charters go through to be approved? Because we have some that were approved this year. Could you just, for review, explain what do people go through to get a charter school approved?
Most charter schools attend our technical assistance meeting in the spring. The application and the application evaluation system are not only on our website, but on the DOE website as well, because there's set questions that every charter applicant, no matter where they are in the state of Florida, must answer. Then those are due at a specific deadline. Ours was August 3 at 4:00 p.m., at which time Premier did deliver on time. They were then given the option to give us a 30-day extension. Statutorily, we have to do this whole process in 60 days unless they grant us that 30-day extension. They didn't grant it to us last year, and they didn't grant it to us this year. Therefore, we are in the process of going through 30 days of review where our team meets several different times. We do interview all of our applicants throughout the process. And then, of course, then it has to go to two board meetings, one for informational purposes, and then one for the final vote, which again is required by statute. That takes the full 60 days.
So, how many people are on your team then? So this isn't you making the decision?
No, ma'am. It is not an isolated decision by the Office of School Choice. We have, oh goodness, 15 to 20 people on our team, depending on the application. For instance, our secondary resource people are on this. We have food, we have transportation. All of our directors that have a part of this application read and evaluate. We have three different people from budgeting to review the narrative to make sure it balances with their budget. So there's lots of things we go through. The interview process that each of our teams go through, we tried to keep it to an hour this year. It did go over. We were trying to collect as much information. It did not go to two and a half hours this year. I will admittedly say that Premier did have a rough interview last year because we kept, we just let it go on way too long. So this year, I did change up our procedures. That was then to close up the gaps of any type of understanding, answer questions that we might have at the application. After the interview, then we again meet as a team to discuss, did those questions get answered? Did they close up any misunderstandings or things that we perhaps did not read in their application? Did they fulfill all of the DOE requirements within this application? And does Brevard County believe that they are ready to open a charter at this time? And hence, the results that you see before you.
Okay. So we'll get into the specifics during the information item, but I just wanted to clarify at this time, this isn't a one or two individual?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, there's lots of heartfelt discussion for that. You know, we want, we support fantastic charter schools, but this is a tough process for everybody.
Okay. So be prepared during information, we'll have you come back up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I guess, anything else? Okay. So then that moves us to the consent agenda. So for those of you that came to Premier, we're going to further discuss the item in the information agenda, which will be coming a little bit further if you want to hang on. So the consent agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are 14 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? Mrs. Bellford?
F-12B.
F-12B, which would be, which particular item under?
Curriculum and instruction under purchasing bids and RFPs.
Okay. You want to identify the item? I don't know if that would help.
Yeah, it's for the access program.
That's what I wondered if, okay, the access program. So everything except the access program under RFPs. Okay, anybody else? John, you good? Karen? Okay. So Pam, let's move everything except the one item under purchasing. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Ah, now we've shifted to the guys. Okay, motion.
We're playing nice.
Okay. Motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Bellford.
So I pulled this item because initially, looking at the information put forth, it talks about a training for children with special needs, but then when I got into the contract, it references schools that are not in our district and Gilchrist County. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for our public to understand what this relationship is and why we are funding training in Gilchrist, although we are not directly funding, but you all get my point. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Let me introduce to you Ms. Randy LaRusso. And Randy was a staffing specialist here in Brevard County, and now she is a project manager for a grant with the DOE. Randy is housed here at O'Gally High School. She's the project manager. She has one teacher and then an accounting specialist that works with her, but let me let her share with you what the grant entails.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Nederen.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Meter.
Thank you. Access is a Florida discretionary grant out of the BEES office, which is the Bureau of Exceptional Education and Student Services. We are housed here in Brevard because you all were nice enough to have us here. Being a Brevard employee, I wanted to stay home. So we brought the grant here. We are heading into our fifth year, and we serve specifically students with significant cognitive disabilities who are on alternate achievement standards. We do serve the entire state of Florida, and our goal is to deliver quality professional development to teachers as it applies to the teaching and learning of access points. And so yes, I am taking Philip Schweigert to Gilchrist. He has already been here in Brevard and about 15 other counties so far in the state. And he comes out of the National IDEA Works Grant as an expert in his field of communication for non-verbal students.
So we are not providing funding for training in other districts, correct? This is, you are provided that funding to provide those services for the entire state? It's not Brevard money?
That's correct. Brevard does get a percentage of my grant, which equates to approximately $38,000, so that we can access purchasing and payroll and all of those kind of fiscal requirements. But it does not cost Brevard anything at all.
So we're the fiscal agent to manage it and oversee it. And so the board is approving it to make sure that you're not spending the money to go off on a cruise out of Port Canaveral.
That's right. As, with you accepting us as our fiscal agent and us agreeing to be here, we follow Brevard's rules on everything.
So to clarify them for everybody else, the money flows through our budget, and since it touches our budget, we're required to approve the outflow.
Absolutely. You keep me honest.
And I think in the email response that, when Ms. Belford asked for extra information, there were several people in the, or at least three people that are in the office, is that true, including a teacher? Is that a Brevard County employee?
It is. We're all Brevard County employees, but all of our salaries come out of the grant. Everything comes out of the grant. We are at no cost to the district at all.
I guess that would go to, then HR, is that, is that a staffing, did that staff come out of the classroom to do that? Or that's just hired for the grant and goes away when the grant goes away?
One of our teachers did come out of the classroom. And my bookkeeper did come out from a school.
Okay. I don't care what the salaries are paid for, I want to know why they came out of the classroom.
They applied for this position when it was advertised, and they didn't take away from the classroom. They were replaced in their classroom position.
Okay.
They just chose to have this position that travels across the state.
Okay. And how many grants do we operate as the fiscal agent for in this, in our system? That's probably, that's a finance question.
Yes.
How many?
I would say many, but we can get that specific information. We do put out to the board an update annually of all of the grants that do come into the district. I can make sure that's updated and get it to you.
I'm more concerned about the grants that we are, that we are spending our time, as much as we want to say that we're not spending, it doesn't cost the district anything, it actually does. In the long run, it does cost the district time. It costs us time, it costs us effort, and that's fine, but we need to be upfront about that. I mean, it's not something that's just being, we are, we are creating room in a, in a, in a high school. We've given them space, so even if they pay for it, that still is taking away from what that building was originally intended to be, because it's not for this county. It is for the entire state. So my concern is that I know, that we know and that the public knows, how many of the grants that are going outside of this county that we are the fiscal agents for? That's what I'm concerned about.
I can get that information for you, Mr. Craig. This one in particular, she did reference the overhead funds that we do get, and we do get about $38,000 a year to cover exactly what you're talking about, the use of technology, a payment towards electricity. And Mr. Solomon is the one who agreed to have her on his campus because he did have some space available.
Okay. I'm just, you know, we just need to, we need to be upfront with that, where that money's,
Correct.
Where those things, where those things exist.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Any others? Anything else? Okay. Move to approve? Second. Motion was, okay. Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Any need for a break? Okay, let's move right into the information agenda. The information agenda includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn.
There are five items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss anything on the information agenda?
H-23 student progression.
Yep, I figured that one, I was going to do that one, and I assume we all want to
Twenty-four.
H-24, that's what I was going to say, H-23 and H-24. Okay, so let's start with the student progression plan. Mrs. Belford, you're probably going to bring up what I was going to bring up. Do you want the microphone on? Would that help? Okay. You said it, not me.
I pulled this for some clarification, because in reading through the description that was posted, and it may have been changed since my initial read-through, but I'm always cognizant of not making decisions for students based on a single test score. And my concern was in the language that was put forth on the edits, that it looked as though we were still requiring students to be put into remedial courses based on a test score. And I have had some conversation with Ms. Van Meter, and I believe that we are all on the same page, but I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for our public and the rest of the board members who may not have been privy to that conversation to also have the same understanding.
And, Ms. Belford, you are absolutely correct. Under the section of the board agenda item that specifically addressed the middle school, it did say that added, under the first bullet, the last sentence did use the word "required", and that should not have been there. It should have mirrored the high school verbiage exactly. So I do have a copy of the board agenda item that has been edited to remove the word "required," and you can take a look at it, or you can wait for the next board meeting. But it's been taken care of, and we thank you for drawing our attention to that.
And so just to clarify, we are not requiring students to go into remedial course based on a test score. We are still giving the parents the opportunity, letting them know that it is suggested for their child, but they have the option to not participate, correct?
Absolutely. It has required a conversation between the parent and the folks at the school, but ultimately it's the parent's decision, yes.
Good, and we'll make that clear to the parents, and the schools will be very clear that it's not a requirement.
Absolutely.
Great. Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the next item, back to charter schools. Okay. Who wants to, I guess, Mrs. Archer, you're coming up, I know my question, and maybe this is the board's, is, could you get into a little bit more detail about why your committee recommended the denial of this? Some concerns were voiced during public discussion tonight. I know I forwarded you a letter of concerns that perhaps the committee was biased in their decision-making. So maybe you could elaborate a little bit?
Sure. Charter applications that come through, like I had said earlier, have very specific questions they must address. Frequently, charter applications, as I said, this is a tough task, may not make it through the process the first year, and so they have a denial, and there are opportunities for us to meet, to maybe outline more specifically things they need to be worked on. Then it is up to the charter applicant to take those suggestions and do with it what they may. You know, they may fine-tune things, they may improve things. Sometimes our charters, in Pineapple Cove Classical Academy, which is opening up this year, had to do this three times before they had a successful application, so it is tough. I have not been in this office long enough to tell you what the average opportunities that our charter applications have to take to do. I will tell you that this is Premier's third go-round with us. The first time, they forgot to enclose their budget, so they withdrew their application, but we worked with them again. Applications from year to year are different. I don't compare, excuse me, I should say, our team does not compare last year's application to this year's application. There may be some new and different things. For instance, to say that what they had approved last year is not at approval level this year, it would totally depended upon what was addressed in the application itself. As a charter sponsor, we need to be sure that our charters are strong in three areas: student achievement, governance, and the business organization. And this is where they fell short. We can work with them in their transportation, should that budget item be a little, it's a little tough, because you don't know how many children are going to ride the bus. Their food, national food lunch program, again, another thing that takes a while to go through the application cycle, so we understand all of that. But when you're talking about having a career and technical academy that is going to have a CTE program that is highly successful, we need to know that you've included in your budget your operations, your labs. How are you going to develop that in your program? This was, and indeed, Premier did go from three very expensive CTEs of last year and honed it down to manufacturing. But from what my understanding is, and the team understands, manufacturing is a wide-open window. It could be welding, it could be carpentry, it could be a number of things. So to think that 250 students in 10 through, 9th through 10th grade are going to all go on the manufacturing track, we were curious about, because you're talking both females and males, as well as high-risk students who need to have hands-on opportunities. Then you're also probably looking at students with learning disabilities that need to be assisted through these processes. So these were some of the concerns of the committee that we asked, very pointed questions during the interview time. And some questions were answered, but still were not clear enough to understand. You talk about a CPT, and I'll tell you honestly, Janice Schultz is your best reference for all of CTE. She's sat and combed through this application, she's participated, but a CPT is a very tough test. And again, you're going to have students who struggle with reading, take a test that sometimes professionals wind up having to work very hard to pass themselves. That was one of the concerns, again, looking at manufacturing. We don't doubt that there's a need in the community. That's not an issue. They mentioned earlier in their questions that they have a business partnership with Eastern Florida State College. Their letter of support simply says that Eastern Florida State College will have a representative on their advisory board. Does not indicate any definitive business partnership whatsoever in their letter. They do mention that they have other partnerships in the wings, and they can't get these partnerships moving without the charter application. But without the charter application being a solid document, that they understand the processes to run a school, then that charter application is not going to fly. The other key piece they were having an issue with was governance. We have, you know, last year again, I said I didn't compare, but you know, they brought this up, last year they had governing board members that didn't even live in Brevard County. And that was a concern. What type of ownership do they have in Brevard for the success of our students? And so they honed that up, and they brought in some members who were interested in Brevard County as a whole, and I believe they made an attempt. But there were certain things, again, in that governing piece that did not allow us to truly understand that they understand the oversight processes of the governing board, the fiscal management that needs to be observed. There were just quite a few weaknesses for us as a team to put a stamp of approval on here that says they're, they're ready to go, with some assistance. You know, because it's hard, learning everything from student membership to master schedules, those are the things they're responsible for doing. But these were some of the concerns that we had, so we also gave a kind of a weighted application so that they could see, just a cold hard, where did it score, what were the numbers, and how far did they pass? So this little tool that we used, it came up with a 61% pass rate. By standards, that's not passing to give us as a team the solid understanding that they are ready to open. Do they have vision and passion? Yes. I will never tell you or anyone else, including them. Are they lovely people? Yes, they are. But it's all about this application, how it was written, with their budget. And again, an example, they had two budgets in the back of their book. Well, which budget are we supposed to use to make sure that their narrative matches their budget? If they're going to buy ed mentum as their blended learning curriculum, is it in Budget 1, or is it in Budget 2? Is it under software, or is it under supplies? Those were the things that we needed to clarify, but again, going in, we don't know which budget is which. There were some things like that, that made it very difficult for us to discern the true understanding of where their monies were going to be spent. Revenues were over-calculated. Some things, of course, they wouldn't know, wouldn't be included, i.e. their Title I funds, they won't get. That's simply just something they have to wait and see how many students they have that meet that criteria. You know, again, not something we held against them, but again, that would be a revenue fault in the actual budget itself when you're talking about fine-tuning. How are you going to build the lab? How are you going to take a building and redesign it so that you can offer these things? They did mention they will eventually get into surveying their students to plan their programs. So how do you market to 250 high-risk students without a target audience? Without saying, "Come see our school, we've got this great auto mechanics lab, we're going to, you know, teach you how to weld." These very marketable skills that our community does need, but those were some of the hardcore things that were missing out of the application. It wasn't the vision. The vision is grand. It's making it come to fruition that we worried about.
Okay, questions from the board? I'm just looking, I just want to make.
I guess I really don't have a question, other than, when you, when you looked specifically at the budget, I guess, was it presented in a way that, trying to think of the best word? What made the hair stand up on your neck when you read through their budget? Were there specific things? Was it cash flow? Was it, was it promissory stuff that maybe didn't have backing? Just kind of wondering.
It was missing pieces from their narrative that didn't translate into their budget. Personnel, programs, those type of things that didn't translate over. And so you may say you have a guidance counselor, a one full-time position guidance counselor, but then it doesn't show up in the budget. You know you have high-risk students, so the likelihood that you're going to need a full-time counselor is great. And so you want to make sure that they've been able to afford that. Is it necessary that they have a principal and an executive director, but no guidance counselor? Again, you know, you wonder about, could the roles at the top-heavy administration be shared and then moved elsewhere? I do know that our budget people go over carefully their revenues, and they plug in the numbers to make sure it all flows very carefully, and it just, again, had some missing pieces. It needs to have somebody going through a fine-tooth comb between their narrative and their budget.
So I guess that would, were there, were there any people on the Premier, when you interviewed them? them, on their team, that were budget experts, accountants, that had actually put the budget together numerical-wise?
They mentioned that they had accountant, the accountant was not there. I do know they, I hate to say it this way, but somebody on the team had said that this was, the budget was not their best piece of work.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah, Andy?
Governance is, in my opinion, you know, fairly cut and dry. There are a lot of organizations, and when they begin, they look for existing models, successful models of, by maybe pulling bylaws, either boilerplate or finance. Do we not provide, or does the state not provide guidelines or a template for acceptable governance of a charter? It almost sounds like they're left to recreate governance. I'm just, it surprises me to see that on a list, when it should be fairly simple for them to outline how they're going to govern their organization.
It is, and the bylaws had some, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for the exact piece here on their governance, here we go. So, they included their bylaws, and they have a board of trustees, and they had some particular plans, but they failed to provide a complete and clear understanding that they understand what the governing board's responsibilities are. For instance, they had an unusual position called the incorporator, and the incorporator shall have, all corporate powers shall be exercised by or under the authority of the board of trustees, however, the incorporator shall oversee such powers and authority. But that's not how governing board works. You don't have one single person that tells the governing board how to run their school. It is the governing board's job to oversee the integral parts of what happens day in and day out at that school, from hiring the principal, to the financials, to answering any other requirements. So, there were just some conflicting informations about who's elected, how they're elected, who has what vote, when do they have a vote? And again, all of this information is on the evaluation tool that I had sent. And, you know, of course, we always invite you to participate at any point in time when we have our interview processes, or come into our office and review these things, but that's what some of the things that were happening. They were just inconsistency with who did what as a board member.
And I get that, but you didn't answer the question.
I'm sorry.
Are there not acceptable models of governance stated by, you know, by DOE, or by us, or by the application directions? It just doesn't seem like a complicated part of an application to stub your toe on.
Is there a model? Not necessarily, but they have to have specific questions answered. Documentation, proper legal structure, the 501(c)(3), the clear understanding of the governing board's responsibilities. So, you would, again, this is, these are the things they have to answer. You would think that there would be a model that is available. They have Charter School Support Unit up at the DOE that's there to help answer questions. They do, their bylaws should be very similar to other bylaws of other charter schools.
That's what I would think. Okay, so the answer is no, not specifically.
Correct. Sorry, that was kind of a long diatribe over.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question. Just so I understand, so the request, August 3rd was turned in. Normally, you ask for an extension because you just want to make sure you can go through everything, right? And so, this organization said, "No, they don't." But now, they're asking for an extension? Is that, have they given you like a letter asking for an extension? Or, how does that work? How does that process work?
The process is that they usually grant us that extension from the day of submission, and so that we know how to time ourselves accordingly within this six-day window. Then, so we, they did not grant that to us, so we are meeting everything statutorily. We need to do that 30-day review so we could get it to the school board. I would have to say they're not pleased with the results, so now they want an extension. One of the questions they asked during the interview is, could they resubmit portions of their application? And we don't do that. Otherwise, we would be constantly reading applications throughout the years. They continue to resubmit till it's absolutely perfected. And they chose not to grant it. In the interview, we understood that one of the reasons they did not want to grant us the 30 extra days was simply because the facilities that they were looking to move into was being held until middle October. Should they be approved, that would be about the timeframe in which this process would be over, so that they could enter that contract, if they were approved.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
You said the request for the extension has to be done with the application submission.
Yes, sir.
Is that a box they check on the application, or is that something that they need to have advanced awareness of?
No, sir, that's a box they can check, and it's part of the training that we offer, and it's signed by their founding board member.
Thank you.
It's one of the first pages.
Did they take any of the training you offered?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I know they were there two years ago. I had a conflict, so my colleague, Ms. Davis, ran the training last year, so, but I believe they were there.
Anybody else?
So, when you finalize it, and you decide to deny, is there any debrief with a charter company, or they just get the paperwork, and then they go from there and come back the following year?
If they would like to meet with us, they are welcome to meet with us. Unfortunately, they've kind of used some of my words against me, and said that I have not allowed them, you know, if I ask them one question or give them a direction one year, this year, I'm penalizing them for that. That's not true. Their application shifted focus, and with that shift in focus, begot other issues. But no, I'd be happy to meet with them and go over this. I mean, all these sticky notes that I have are either questions I have, or concerns that have come up, that I will happily address with them. But again, somebody has to go through this application with a fine-tooth comb, and what is said in the staffing plan needs to show up in the budget, and their organization just needs to match.
And as board members, I think we all appreciate you going through these things with a fine-tooth comb, because we don't want to get into a situation. But this is not unusual.
No.
I mean, we, or you, those people.
The team.
Deny applications because they are not fulfilling the requirements that are needed.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's not an easy decision, please. This is heartbreaking, because you know they are excited and they're passionate, so, you know, this is one of those things that we take very seriously. This is not something we just, you know, make an arbitrary decision and go, "Oh, we feel like checking that box." That's just not the case at all.
Thank you, Ken. So, I'm not hearing from the board any desire to change the timeline, or to do anything different? I'm just, the, I'm, I'm just saying, the request during public discussion was to push back and to meet with the board, and I'm just saying, I'm not here, just to clarify for the people in the audience, we're going to continue with the timeline, and we're not going to meet with the people of Premier, is that correct?
Well, I will say that I have met with them. I knew nothing about Premier, and received a few phone calls that they, from several of the people, which was fine. I'm happy to meet with anybody. I had not read anything from you, so I kind of went in with an open slate, which I thought was good. And I'll, first of all, say that I absolutely applaud the effort, because CTE is extremely important, and vocational training is a gap that we, I think everyone up here will nod their head and acknowledge. I happen to know somebody owns a pretty good-sized manufacturing firm, and she would say the same thing. Yes, we need some talented people, in some very specific skillset areas, though. Manufacturing, as I think was stated in here, is a cluster, and there are some very specifics inside of manufacturing, anywhere from software to design, to, you know, machinists, to QA, to test and eval. Whatever, all those things, obviously, are part of the manufacturing lifecycle process, but that was, one of the things that stood out to me, was that there wasn't a focus of exactly what was going to be offered, because that was what I was hoping to see and what I was expecting to see. And I think that there is that vision there, there's that knowledge base of, this is what is going to really take off in this, in this community, and certainly, I hope that that happens. But I, as I read through your report, and I read through their entire report over the weekend, I was not surprised that many of the questions that I asked them were the similar questions that ended up on the report. And my comments to them, and there's, a couple of them are sitting right there, is to tighten those up, you know? And we had a hearing this afternoon, you know, about, use a corrective plan of action. Take a, you know, take a laundry list, and just go down through it, and make sure that each of those things are tightened up, so that you have a, you can walk in and give a 30-second elevator speech of what you're doing, how you're going to do it, how are you going to serve them, oh, and how are you going to pay for it? You know, those are pretty important things, right now, to get something off the ground. How are you going to turn the lights on? And, you know, that did concern me as well. So, I appreciate the detail that you put in the report, but overall, the idea of a vocational opportunity for our high school students here is definitely, is
Absolutely.
Really needed. Somebody made a comment that I wrote down, that kind of annoyed me, or bothered me a little bit, but that, something about that unfortunately, these kids aren't going to college. Going to colleges, that's not unfortunate, you know? There are plenty of people that are going to do great things, whether they go to college or not. That has nothing to do with, you should never think it's unfortunate that you're not going on to higher education in a traditional learning format. A vocation is, I have tons of friends in the vocation industry, and they're doing wonderful things, and great things. And so, an opportunity like this could just be the catalyst to get people, and get kids moving in that direction, to give them that option, give them that idea. So, I hope it continues to evolve and continues to blossom, because I think it's a great idea, and it's something we need.
Yeah. And I already know, Mr. Vice, what you're going to say is legally, we can't, you were wanting to say something about the board meeting, anyway.
There's no provision in the statute for individual meetings with board members on an application.
Exactly. Okay.
What is the percentage that they would have to score to be considered for approval? Is there a magic?
Well, there's no percentage, but we were just trying to mathematically, like I said, this was heart-wrenching for us as well. So, when you're just looking at meets, does not meet, partially meets, and you're trying to evaluate what, you know, how are we going to make the decision? We decided just to give that a rubric score, so we could come out with a hardcore number of 61. So, I would say 75% is bare minimum, making sure that you understand every aspect of it. Because some of these partially meets that they have are easy fixes. It's just a matter of working with the team and teaching them. Some of the fixes, partially meets, like ExEd and with our ELL students, that's, carries audit issues, and, you know, federal documentation and compliances with IEPs, et cetera, so that's not something that could be easily overlooked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Although it says there's no staff reports, I, Dr. Blackburn, right before the board meeting, I hate no surprises, I had a couple of board members request that Mr. Budo talked to us a little bit more about EDR. Do you mind if we do it at this point in time? Thank you, Gino. Appreciate the board updates.
No, no.
You've been giving us, and I know, I've been reading up on my board updates, and I guess, at least from my perspective, I know the other board members are going to weigh in. Number one, we'd like a little bit more meat to the updates, but I think at this point, the public is starting to ask, and I know, at some point, we're going to want more of a public update on where we're at, but why don't you, this will be your first opportunity, maybe elaborate what was in the board update about where we are at this point in time?
Yeah, and to start with the end you're describing, as far as an update, a more formal update for the public, there were some key pieces that we were hoping to have in place at that time, including the contract language and such. I think it's fair to say that right now, what we've been doing has been on three parallel tracks. One is certainly with the new vendor, Harris, coming onboard. You know, we are building, constructing this new relationship with them, which is, you know, a lot of pieces and parts on that. We've also been supporting the inquiries, if you will, for the past practices and items there, and then while those are going on, we're certainly, the business as usual. We're, you know, rolling out this product as we're doing, have been doing for the last, you know, few years now. Regarding the relationship, we have had Harris ask, rightfully so, for some patience while they get their arms around this. They, you know, they knew a certain amount about the product they purchased before they made that decision to buy it, that it was something that they thought they could, you know, eventually market, certainly profit from. But there were, in terms of the status of each individual module, and within those modules, the sub-projects, you know, that they were still really learning as they came in. A lot of that hinged on them getting a dedicated project manager onboard, which they committed to do, and did a couple of weeks ago. I would say that prior to that project manager coming onboard, a lot of what they did was data gathering, but there was really no compilation, and then start, you know, building some type of a plan from that. We've seen some significant movement in that direction now, and, you know, it's early still, but we are encouraged by the project manager they got onboard, and some of the methodology that Harris, as a whole, has introduced to the organization in terms of the software development process, some of the tools that they've brought in for software development, that we just, quite frankly, never saw in the smaller company in the past. Minor, but in terms of resources, but important in terms of the public perception, we certainly have been supporting the, addressing the past practices and things that have gone. I don't know the details on that, other than to say that, you know, I personally met with FDLE and Sheriff's Office, and other people have done the same. In any types of solicitation for information, we're providing that. A lot of that is not only with the law enforcement side, but also with the auditors and with the counsel. Whitman Maylick has been working in two capacities, really. One is to support the past inquiries, and, you know, we've been helping them along there, and also with McGladrey. And I think that when they made their presentation, they
Okay, wait a minute. Stop for a second. What did you say they're helping you with? Capacity requirements?
Well, no, the inquiries about what may or may not have taken place in the past, that was done properly or improperly, those inquiries. And, you know, so we're still getting some, you know.
And so, we hired an attorney firm to help us, how?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, the, this was the law firm that was already in place, that made their presentation when they came in. When they, and also McGladrey, did their presentation, I think you'll recall, there were several times when they indicated that they were making some assumptions, that they were not able to dig into this at the level that would really require some answers. And subsequent to that, you know, we've been helping fill in some of those gaps with more detail, and, you know.
So, they're still looking at this to do us, do another report for us? Separate from what FDLE is doing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, my, the information that we've been asked for from Whitman Maylick have been supporting both, filling in the gaps of some of the detail they did not get in the past, but also some of the information that we're working with them on in terms of the contract, and I use this term very loosely, renegotiations, because, you know, we, to what extent that contract is going to be reworked, an addendum versus, you know, taking out pieces and parts of it, is still somewhat up in the air, because we don't know exactly what Harris is going to propose to us. They're still building their part of that. So, I think it's fair to say that a lot of the information that the attorneys are asking for are filling in the gaps of the assumptions that they made in the past, but it's also to help make sure that they understand it well enough to build a more solid contract going forward.
They're getting prepared for the contract negotiation with Harris.
Correct.
Okay. I guess I wasn't aware that we were going to renegotiate from this perspective. That, you know, when I talked to Mr. Fitzgerald, what he said was, we bought everything like you have it and so you are, we bought the company, the people, the product, and your contract. Whether you like the contract or not, they bought it. If you renegotiate, the concern was from him, then right now in the current contract, you don't pay for training and documentation and some of the other stuff, that if we renegotiate, using that word renegotiate, then we will fall under rules of Harris that, because that's how they charge their customers. And we were not being charged that way before. So I guess I'm a little concerned and would certainly like something like that to come to the board, obviously, before.
Well, let me assure
I'm assuming that it's going to come to the board for approval.
Right.
And I did understand that the law firm was in one of the meetings discussing what was going on with, you know, the status of where Harris and the project manager and all that stuff was. And so are they still charging us at the $200 an hour or whatever it is?
Yes. I have contracted with them to help in the, and that's why I was intentionally using the word loosely negotiating. Because I've heard actually from a few of the Harris folks, including Mr. Fitzgerald, that he has conveyed to some of you that there are some cautions about renegotiating everything there. And in my earlier discussions with Mr. Beisler, along with the gentleman from Wyderman there, Ed Kinberg is one I've been working with personally, but there's been Aaron, and I don't want to butcher his last name, but has also been on some of the conference calls I've been on. We've, you know, we really are not hoping to get to that point. The best way I could describe the
I kind of called it a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, it would be, it would be an addendum ideally. And even though they did accept verbally, we've heard, you know, Harris, not only at the podium, but in other meetings, talk about they're going to take on the contract as is, they're going to do all these things. Rightfully so, some of the things that we've been weak on in the past has been the contract language and the way we've enforced it, you know. So, you know, lessons learned, we're not going to just take their word for it. We do want to add language that specifies the deliverables they've got. You know, we've got those in the contract. The specs are the legacy system for most of it, but there are a couple of modules that we didn't have before, like the electronic timekeeping, or I'm sorry, time entry. And we need to not only identify those, but really make sure that we've got some type of understanding of what it means to be delivered. Because this all really comes down to the payment, you know, which by the way, no payments have been made since the edict not to do so. Therefore, candidly, we're not in any rush in terms of the deployment. One of the problems that we've had in the past and we've been guilty of was because of artificial milestones almost, you know, we were rushing to get some of this in. As long as we don't have to pay anybody anything, then, you know, we're going to do this the way we, you know, thought it should have been done along, which was a little bit, you know, with a lot more care in terms of not releasing it for us internally for user acceptance testing until it's reached a pretty mature level. And certainly not out to the field until we've gotten some key things done like performance, which is one of the things that's still being worked on.
Thank you.
Ms. Dean, and then John.
Two questions, Mr. Budo. When we heard from Harris, as well as Wyderman Malek and the auditors at that initial meeting, there was a timeline put out by Harris, and I believe you've addressed this, but I just want to clarify for anyone who may have only caught part of that. The timeline that was shared at that meeting by Harris indicating that we would have modules by given dates, we're not at this point sticking to that timeline. We're not going to meet those deadlines out of choice, correct? Because we want to make sure that it's done thoroughly?
Out of choice on our part and really out of necessity on their part. Those modules are not as ready as I think they sat here and thought it was at the time that they made those. Now, they were not commitments, but they certainly were some ETAs. One in particular is the human resources part of that. The payroll side is a very complex thing. And I think when they got in there and really started looking under the covers, that there were some issues that they were not, you know, ready to even estimate when it would be ready. So they've gotten quite a bit done in that area. They have, this project manager, like I said, is starting to give us a lot of details on their progress. And most importantly, there is some disciplined methodology now in place in what they're doing. So when they give us a date now, I have a lot more confidence because we have told them, don't give us a date because you just want to look good or you're trying to be, you know, overzealous about it. Give us a date and we're going to meet it. By the way, these dates that they're going to be doing, they're going to be giving us, are going to be worked with our schedules. They've been provided schedules of our maintenance windows when we do our major outages because these types of things are more than just, they take a full weekend to give you enough time to back things out and such. We do those roughly every other month. They've got our schedule for payroll cycles, they've got our schedule for, and I believe they have this already, the moratorium for business, I'm sorry, for meetings and such. They're trying to take all these different foils, as a real good project manager would do, and see where all the contention is for resources, business cycles and things like that. So it's slow, but I think it's the way it should have been done all along.
We also heard that we, the recommendation was for us to assign a project manager here at the district in addition to them identifying a project manager devoted to this project. Where are we with a project manager for BPS?
Well, initially, my commitment to Dr. Blackburn was to have everything in place to assign a project manager as soon as we had some contract in place. And that was, I guess, the best way to describe it, to make sure that we were not going to add some resources prematurely. Optimistically, this is going to be fine, the contract's going to be agreed to by all of us. By the way, you will see it multiple times before it's going to be coming up for a vote there. We will start trickling this to you as there is some substance to this. More recently, actually, and I think it was both the gentlemen at the law firm, suggested getting them onboard sooner because should this go bad with the negotiations, then we would still need some project management to help us pick up the pieces and see where to go next. And point was well taken. So we've worked on accelerating that. We've come up with some job descriptions, we've come up with some alternate places where we can go ahead and advertise that. I've had discussions with Judy in terms of the funding. And, you know, we're going to be moving on that sooner than we were originally.
To that point, the project manager, I just want to weigh in here. As the board knows, and I think the public understands that, I believe it was my second day here where this topic surfaced. And there were some shortcomings, right, to say the least. One of the things I've asked for is that prior to spending significant dollars, either internally to support this project and/or definitely back to the company, that there's some proof on the table that I can verify in terms of where we are and where we're going to be. So high-level thinking, based on what I've seen, is that there are really three potential places or three potential recommendations I'll be bringing to the board. Recommendation one is that for minimal and/or zero additional investment, we're going to get everywhere we need to get in terms of a completed product and services, et cetera, et cetera. Option number two would be for either significant additional investment. We are going to get everything that we have coming to us or we're going to get a portion of what we have coming to us. Option number three is that we've done this long enough. There's no light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, and that I don't see proof that we are going to get delivered what we need. And then my recommendation would be to cut bait, cease and desist movement on this project. So I need some proof before, so I consider the hiring of a project manager to be a significant investment. So I need some proof that that investment is going to get us to either recommendation one or recommendation two.
Mr. Budo, just to clarify, one of the reasons that that project manager was recommended during that meeting was because there were a lot of hands in the pot, if you will, throughout that project. And so if I understand correctly, although we have not officially hired a project manager, you have become point person on the project for communication so that we have a clear line of communication and we're minimizing confusion there. Is that correct?
That is correct, in and out, and for the board, for staff, for the vendors involved. One little, I guess, new item was that the point person we had from McGladrey, a Jeff Britton, is no longer with McGladrey left. So there's a Nicola, new person, Nicola with a very long last name, I haven't written down, you know. As an immigrant, I should be better at that, but I'm, you know, I, and we've had, I've had discussions with them, including a conference call last week with Jennifer Murtha and her team to make sure we've got continuity there. But it's just, you know, one of those other things, the nature of this business.
Probably if you're really good at technology, you get offered, offered a lot of money to go someplace else. And it better not be Harris, we ought to find out, make sure Harris didn't steal them.
No.
Okay. Okay, John.
Mr. Budo, if all things go well, very well, can you, I just want to create or help establish expectations around this project. If all things were to go well, when do you foresee having the product in our hands and usable the way it's intended to be used? What kind of timeframe are you looking at if all things work well?
I will say that with all the major modules, by the end of this calendar year is what I'm expecting that to be. And I'm reluctant to say prior to that, in large part because we have some business cycles that need to be folded into that. You know, they may have payroll ready in February, but we may not choose to implement at that time because of either training or because of, you know, a clean rollout. There are a couple of modules there that we discuss every week. They have not, as far as we know, the previous company has not even really started yet. Actually, in some of it, like workflow, there isn't even clear understanding of what that product really is. So I can't imagine those would be ready by the end of this calendar year if they haven't even started designing it. But in terms of HR, payroll, and when I say all the financial modules, I would expect by the end of this calendar year.
But that's not everything, though.
Not everything because I'm reluctant to say everything, since they haven't even designed pieces and parts of this.
Right, so again, considering everything, when do we think everything will be complete? Ballpark.
Sometime after this calendar year. You know, I don't want to, that's one of the things we've done and we're guilty and we're victims of, is some failed promises, so.
And I'm not pushing you, so I'm asking that question. I'm not pushing Mr. Budo or his staff to go fast, I'm pushing them to be accurate. And however long it takes for accuracy to surface, that's what I'm expecting he and his team to execute on. So, but just reminding the board and the public that we're going to be here for a while.
Okay. Thank you, John.
First of all, Mr. Budo, thank you for stepping up and giving us an update and for taking control of the project, as it were. So I appreciate that, you know, we need that. And especially in light of what's happened, I think it's great that we have, you know, some, get that public information out there, exactly what's going on. And Dr. Blackburn, I appreciate you laying out the options because I think that's, we need to know that upfront. We need to know what our long-term strategy might entail, and I think you've laid that out real well. I will say that my interpretation of a PM was not that we were going to go out and hire somebody, that we were going to take from Hyde, that we were going to have, we have internal capability and capacity to do that. And if we don't, so be it. But I don't know if that's a full-time job. I would have to see the job description for a project that doesn't have requirements yet, which leads me back to the question I'll ask now. Have we defined the requirements that allow us to say that a module has actually been delivered to our specifications? Because without the requirements, it doesn't mean anything, right? I mean, what is our specifications if we haven't put them on paper as a requirement? So have we done that? Have we gone, have we kind of reversed the process and gone backwards to make sure that we know every department that's going to be touched by this knows exactly what it is that they've requested, how it's written in an actual technical requirement, and how that's going to be translated to the company and then how that's going to come back to us?
That, for the majority of these modules, the requirements are the legacy system in terms of functionality. And that has been a big part of our discussions with Harris in ensuring that they understood that. There are parts where we're, they've built something new. As a matter of fact, as recent as this morning's meeting with them, we reminded them that we've had these documented with them in the past and that they need to find them and produce them because we've had multiple discussions with them in terms of laying out those types of requirements. So they will be part of whatever addendum so that it's understood that we've got all of those pieces and parts in there. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
I think it does, you know, the product order form that outlines what is to be delivered never really defines that the requirements are back to the legacy system. So I guess the question is, is, you know, where are the requirements then that show what the transition is going to be and how it needs to interface with the legacy system? You know, there's probably some requirements that are specific to individual, you know, departments and then probably enterprise-wide requirements to make sure that each of those modules actually does what we think it's supposed to based on the legacy system, but then also actually folds into our legacy system or works with it. If, I guess that's what we're keeping is the legacy system, I thought we were getting rid of that.
Yeah, no, they're, we're getting rid of the legacy system. The new system they're writing is, for the most part, a rewrite, but there are some parts of it that they're using legacy, legacy software as parts of their interface so that it can continue to work the way it worked before.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Dr. Blackburn, I agree with your options. And it sounds logical. However, I said before, and I'll say again, I think one of the biggest mistakes that we made at the beginning of this project was not having a project manager to guide us through the process. However, it's a little bit of a catch-22. If we were a large corporation and we were going to commit X amount of funds and we said, we're going to do this large project, the first thing we would do is we would hire a project manager. Who then guide us through product selection, definition, contracts, et cetera, et cetera. However, in our world, it seems a little odd to be hiring somebody to manage a project we haven't approved yet because the project itself might come to the board and not get approved. I think we would have had less issues or we might even have not gone down this road had we had that expertise on staff. And I don't want to criticize staff. However, I don't believe we have a single job description in this district that incorporates the skills of an ERP project manager. in this district that incorporates the skills of an ERP project manager. On top of that, we've got a staff that's overly burdened with technology requirements throughout this district, and we're putting on top of them a very hefty responsibility of the largest technology project, software-wise, that this district's seen in a long time. So, while it might be presumptuous to hire a full-time person at this point in time, I think part of the evaluation that you want to do, Dr. Blackburn, requires that level of expertise to help us really figure out, do we have a viable solution or not? In which case, I would again say, as I said at the previous meeting, maybe we need to look at contracting somebody to assist. Because I don't think, I don't believe that there's anybody assisting us, even, I hate to say, but the law firm, I don't believe they have ERP expertise. RSM McGlady has been involved in ERP projects with other customers, maybe they have somebody that they could, we can contract with to give us some guidance. But there's some evaluation that needs to be done, everybody's accurate about that. And I don't want to discount Mr. Budo or his team, they're very competent technical people, but I don't want us to misevaluate this, now that we've got a lot invested, because we're taxing and overburdened part of our organization that may not have the level of expertise. I don't know if I'm articulating what I'm trying to say. I think we need some high-level ERP knowledge, defining the modules, and I understand that looking at the contract to better define what the deliverables are, although Mrs. Henderson brought up a good point, too, is when you start negotiating, you may start having to give up some things at the same point in time. If we were that large organization going down this road, we would have had that expert prior to negotiations, also, to help guide us in the best contract for the benefit of our organization. So, again, it's a little bit of, being a public entity, somehow we need to put the cart before the horse, maybe this time, to have that expertise. But I'm not sure that figuring this all out ahead of time before hiring the expert is necessarily logical for this type of large project.
No, I think that's a great point. I guess where I'm coming from is, given how much time and resources have already been invested in this particular project, yeah, if I were to start this from square one, I would start with a project manager, absolutely. But starting from where I inherited, I need some proof that the hiring of a resource is going to get us to option one, where we get most of what we've contracted for, and/or option two, that we get, no, we get everything, or most, right? But I have not, I've not been satisfied that I won't be bringing a recommendation to this board to cut bait. I haven't been given that satisfaction yet, and I need that satisfaction before I see additional resources go out the door.
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Ziegler said, and it's not just this product, project, when it comes to having a project manager, because what happens often in this organization is that if a particular department wants something, they will go and buy the software, and then his organization has to figure out how it fits in. So, there is that process and that communication that, in organizations that I have worked with in the past, in this arena, and having gone in as consultants, everything always ran through the IT, no matter what you were buying, whether it was for the print shop or not, if it had to do with, if it hit any other organization, department within the organization. It went through IT so that we could understand the specs, we could understand how it interfaced with existing software, how it would be, if we have the right computers, if we have the right bandwidth, all that sort of stuff. So, I agree with you, but I think that that is actually bigger than this project, that's just something else you have to work on.
Well, if I can, three things really quickly, and actually in reverse chronological order. To your point, we actually have done a lot in this past couple of years to have purchasing act as that clearinghouse for these types of projects. So, and this goes back to something that Mr. Craig mentioned earlier, just because it's free doesn't mean that it doesn't have a cost associated with it.
Absolutely.
And there were sometimes software packages, for example, that a school or a program wanted to get, and if we were not included, we could not identify that, well, it was going to require, you know, interfaces to our, you know, host systems. It was going to require a technician to train people, or it was going to have a contract, or that even though there was no money, it was a contract that somebody, maybe the school was not authorized assigned. So, you know, we have really made great strides in that, and I have to give the purchasing department credit for that. And now, I'm going to, the project managers, we have not exhausted those discussions. We actually only recently, based on the recommendation from the law firm, that we have accelerated some of the options. A contractor is not something that we have exhausted. You know, we've looked at the pros and cons, discussed some of those, can get somebody in quick, certainly have the expertise that we don't have, but then, when we're done, they'll walk out with some of the knowledge that was gained, you know, and how much of that really is of value to us, I don't know. We have not exhausted getting somebody in-house who has, there are so many people here that we don't know what talents they've got. We certainly are going to be looking at that possibility. And Dr. Pace has also reminded me that we've got a relationship with an organization that looks at some displaced Space Coast folks who certainly have had a lot of experience in the project management cycle, and may be able to fill one of those roles. And, you know, certainly back to Dr. Blackburn's point, we don't want to do this prematurely, which is why sometimes we think, well, maybe a contractor would be good, because if we do have to cut bait, we've cut our losses as well, if we hire somebody. So, we thought we had, we were, you know, had more time to do that, and now we're thinking, well, maybe it does make sense to get him on board earlier, but I still owe Dr. Blackburn those pros and cons, so that, you know, we can, you know, make that decision there. And the last thing I want to bring up real quickly is, I want to make sure I did not misspeak earlier. When I was asked about when best world scenario, I think I might have said, "End of this year." I meant, "End of next calendar year," in case I misspoke, because, you know, they don't, they won't even have modules like HR done until, the payroll done until, so I, hopefully, nobody thought I was, this was going to be done in a few months.
No, I'd forgotten about the misplaced thing, misplaced employees. I remember the person that Dane got, that helped with all the efficiencies, that was someone that was coming off, that was a luck into somebody, you remember that? Whoever, whatever, was that, Dr. Pace, was that through that same organization? Because it would be nice, it would be nice if we could find someone with that level of expertise, that had a few hours, with that level, that could come in and do the same thing for us with IT that they were able to do with the efficiencies. I don't know if you ever had a chance, I don't know if you ever had a chance to meet that person, but, Dr. Pace.
That's our potential partnership with Career Source Brevard, and they are still very eager to work with us or help out in some way, so if that's a direction you want us to pursue.
Yeah, how did we luck into that person that saved us literally thousands of dollars, and just had that one little, little lever of, that one little piece of expertise that we had been needing all along?
Right. What they will do for us is to help advertise the specific job descriptions, and look through their displaced workers. There's even some potential source of shared funding that we can potentially pursue, if you want us to do that, for on-the-job training, or those types of things. That's, we didn't even pay for the individual-
Well, that's what I was saying.
-in Dane's shop for a number of weeks.
Would you share what we did with Dane, with Dr. Blackburn? Because I remember that person didn't even cost us. Career Source picked that person up, and maybe this would be a similar type opportunity that would be, once again, a win-win for everyone.
Well, certainly, if the board wishes us to pursue that, we can, we can look into it.
Well, at least share with Dr. Blackburn-
Absolutely.
...what we did in Dane's situation, if the opportunity were to present itself.
Sure.
Just say, I think that's a great idea. There are probably plenty of displaced project managers out there looking for an opportunity, and if they help us, maybe that's a great way to get started, so there's little commitment or obligation on our part.
There is some specific criteria that we have to meet in order to qualify for that funding, but the Career Source Brevard Work Board has already set aside some dollars for that purpose. There's just some hoops that we have to jump through, but we can certainly explore that.
And don't we have one of their members on our audit committee, or on some committee? I remember talking to someone. Oh, I'll talk with you.
I think Dr. Blackburn serves on their board. I know Dr. Bingley did.
Okay. Well, great. Anybody else?
None.
Thank you, Juneau. I know that was a last-minute request, at a minute before the board meeting started, so I appreciate that.
No, no, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, we're now at board member reports and discussion points section. I don't think we have any discussion points, but I know that some board members may have some items they want to bring up to be discussed, so who would like to go first?
I can go and lighten things up. I just have to give a shout-out to Kevin in Food Services. I was having a conversation with my children the other night, and my daughter was very excited to share with me that the school has excellent popcorn chicken. And so, I told her that I would have to pass that along to you, because you get beat up so much. So, popcorn chicken is a winner, thank you.
Okay, did you have any other concerns you wanted to bring up tonight?
We're just being fun.
Okay, well, okay, Andy?
I don't have a board report, but I'll just say, it's really all about the ice cream.
Oh, gee. Are these all these nutty buddies again?
Foods are good.
Okay, no? Karen?
Yep.
John? Well, gee, okay. Well, I wanted to remind the board, we have a workshop on Monday, and one of the things we're going to talk about, you know, Stephanie, you must be really tired talking about school choice. No, you get to stay back there, but I wanted to remind everybody, we're talking about Policy 7120. So, here is a copy of Policy 7120 for your light reading. Well, you made lots of copies of this. Okay. Here, Dr. Blackburn, have a copy.
Thank you, Roger.
Harold, have a copy.
Are you sure you just have about 70 minutes?
Okay, so that's one of our items for the workshop on Monday. So, be prepared with any questions, concerns, anything you want to talk about. I also want to thank senior staff, who have already contacted me on going out to visit schools. I'm already going out with Ms. Van Meter tomorrow, and she's taking me up on my offer for lunch, so we're going out tomorrow.
And you're paying?
Yeah.
Good for you.
I'll be seeing Mrs. Klein on Thursday. And just a reminder to people, I just want to go out and see what you do. If you're going out to a meeting, take me with you. I don't need the dog and pony show of the schools. After 11 years, I've seen the schools. So, I want to see what you're doing. So, that means, Kevin, if you're going out to a school to visit with your cafeteria workers, take me with you. I want to try out the popcorn chicken now. So, RB, if you're going out to do something with buses, give me a call.
Buy her house and pick her up.
That's right, come by and pick me up. I, you know, no, I don't want to do all next week. I can say, everyone, I've already booked up for this week, I've got all year, but I want to go out and see schools, see the different areas, but I also want to spend time with senior staff, and yes, if you ask me, I'll buy you lunch. So, enjoying that. And Mark, thank you for putting together the first quarter activities. I have those in front of me, and I'm going to get out and try to enjoy some of those. So, that was all I have on mine, and so that brings us to superintendent report.
Thank you. No major report, just, I guess-
Minor report?
Minor report. As you all know, I'm still within the meeting and greeting, listening and learning phase, and I'm enjoying it. But I do intend to move, switch phases soon, to initiate strategic planning, and trying to get as many people involved in this community in the strategic planning process. So, I've gathered a lot of business cards and other contacts at other, at all the venues. I did put a note out this weekend on social media to any and all people in Brevard that are going to want to help with the strategic planning, strategic planning process. So, I just wanted to use this opportunity to reiterate that message.
Okay. Now, I wanted to know, is everyone, I'm up to chapter three in the book, has everyone started reading? Yeah?
I did. What? Off to page three.
Now, is there, is there going to be-
The first two are blank.
Is there, is there going to be a EOC at the end of it?
No, no, I'm, dare I say, I'm anti, I won't say that. But no, there will not be an EOC, no.
Ah, but there is an activity that we are, that we are planning, that is going to be secret to all of us, so-
Yes.
-Dr. Blackburn and I are working on that, so, anyway. So, is there any other business to come before the board? Meeting is adjourned.
I am a proud parent of two-
So, you have to read the book, go.
...of Brevard Public Schools. My daughter Jillian is just turned 12.
No book, no go. Am I, I, I thought, oh, Mr. Landor. Now, I, now, I want to-